Okay, I think we're ready to get started if everyone can take your seat. And good afternoon and thank you for joining us here today at the Mastic Senior Center. My name is Adam Gillett and I'm the publisher of the Alameda Post, Alameda's only local news source. Thank you. We publish Alameda stories covering a wide variety of topics every day to our website, our social media platforms, and other news aggregators. If you prefer your news weekly, you can sign up at alameda post dot com for our free newsletter that comes out every Friday morning. And don't forget to check out our weekly podcast, the comprehensive events calendar, our frequent Alameda history articles that we publish in addition to our daily news coverage. As a nonprofit organization, our mission is to inform and educate about Alameda issues. And that's why it's important for the Alameda Post to be here today for the second election in a row, holding an in-person candidate forum. We're grateful to the League of Women Voters of Alameda for cosponsoring today's forum with us. Both of our organizations have mandates committing us to presenting impartial, unbiased, and nonpartisan information about candidates standing for election in our community. We share the same goal of educating voters to make better informed choices in local elections without influencing their choices. Unfortunately, our program will be a little shorter today than we previously planned. We'll only be speaking with city council candidates. We'd intended to have a forum for candidates for the AUSD Board of Governors as well, but only one candidate was able to attend. We'll reschedule a new forum for those candidates online as soon as we are able and we will notify the community. All five of the candidates standing for city council on November 5th are here with us today, including incumbent Trish Herrera Spencer, Tushan Amara Suri Wardena, Greg Bowler, Michelle Pryor, and Stephen Slosson. For today's forum, each of the candidates has agreed to the same ground rules which will be outlined by the moderator. Today's questions have been selected by the LWVA and the Alameda Post, working in collaboration. None of the candidates have seen these questions yet or have any advanced knowledge of the topics we will cover. Please hold your applause for the end of each candidate's statement as they will only have a limited time to speak. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the League for their cooperation and hard work in preparing this forum and in getting everything together and hosting this event with us today. They've been wonderful partners in the planning and production of this forum and are a great asset to our community. I'd also like to thank Alameda Power and Telecom and the Alameda Kiwanis Foundation for their generous grants that allowed us to produce this event today. Thanks also go to Morris and the staff of the Mastic Senior Center and ARPD for allowing us to use this location for our event. And I was asked to mention that Mastic Senior Center is a member organization which you can sign up and take part in all kinds of activities and classes. And all you need to do is be older than 50. So please do sign up and support the Mastic Senior Centers and join those of us who qualify. I'd also like to say that we're grateful to the staffs of A-Town Agency and Castaway Creative for their support producing and recording this event. We'll publish the video of this forum online for those who couldn't attend in person or wish to watch it again. Thank you to all the candidates for joining us today. We wish you success with your campaigns and we're grateful for your initiative and for your participation in today's forum. Most importantly, I'd like to thank all of you for joining us today. We know that you'll find this to be an informative afternoon of interesting questions and answers, and we thank you for making time to be here. Again, the Alameda Post is a nonprofit organization, so if you enjoy this programming, we would really appreciate your support to produce more events like this in the future. You can make a tax deductible donation to our operations by scanning the QR code over there on that green table or by visiting alameda post dot com. That table is also where candidates can put information, so if you'd like to learn more about them after this event, you can find some information there. But now, without any further ado, please allow me to introduce from the Alameda League of Women Voters, today's moderator, Anne McCarregan. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I have to do, be a little tricky here because of course, technology was not my friend and decided to not print a very small section of the first page. So I'll be doing a little bouncing back and forth. Thank you all for coming while I'm going through some comments. Perhaps if you could check your phones and make sure that they are on silent because there's nothing more nerve wracking than having a sudden ring go off in the middle of a very important response to a question. So thank you for that. Hello again, I am Anne McCarregan from the League of Women Voters of Alameda. Thank you again for being with us today for the City Council Candidate Forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government and fights to make democracy work through education and advocacy. The League never supports or opposes candidates or political parties. It does make recommendations on ballot measures based on review and existing positions. Our League participates in vote411.org, an online collection of candidates' information. We encourage you to view the candidates' information there. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you do need to re-register. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. It's secure and easy, and the deadline to register to vote online is October 21st. Voters may also register to vote on Election Day and vote provisionally. Ballots will begin to be mailed out on October 7th. You can vote in person, by mail, or place your ballot on an official Alameda County ballot drop box. Whatever you choose, please remember, cast your ballots on or before Election Day, November 5th. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under the ground rules for this forum. The League is very proud of their history of civil discourses and nonpartisan forums. This is an education event, not a debate. Before we get started, there are some details to review. As noted, we are recording this forum and will be posting it via our websites and YouTube for the broader community to access. There are five candidates running for two open seats on the Alameda Council. Thank you, this is where I get to do a little bit of a switch here. All candidates were invited to participate in this forum. We will begin shortly with opening statements. Our candidates will have up to three minutes to deliver their statement. There is an important transparency statement regarding one of our current candidates who is participating. Tushan was formerly on the board of the Alameda Post and a contributing writer, however, had no advanced knowledge of this forum and he only discovered details about this forum at the same time, at the same time, his fellow candidates. Okay, now I can go back to paper. We will be handling questions for the candidates in the following manner. Questions for this forum have been solicited in advance from the community. We have screened the questions to ensure that they are fair and unbiased and to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. We will not be taking questions from the audience. The order of answering the questions will alternate, and each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. Candidates, please keep an eye on the timekeeper, Adam Gillett. The clock will signal the candidates of their remaining time and when their turn is up. As moderator, I may give verbal prompts as well. Remember that if you go overtime, I will remind you, and if you violate the ground rules, you can be prevented from answering future questions. There will be no separate rebuttals. Following the questions, each candidate will have a two minute, will have two minutes for a closing statement. The order of the candidates has been assigned by the order they will appear on your ballot. So we will begin with opening statements from Tushan, and then go on to Greg, Trish, Michelle, and Steve. And yes, we're going to keep it very informal with first names only. Are our candidates ready? Okay, so here we go. So why don't we begin with our first opening statement? Oh, there we go. And stand, there we go, all right.
Great, thank you. Thank you for coming. You're probably wondering two things: how do you pronounce my name? And what am I running for? I'll start with the first one. I'm Tushan Amara Suri Wardena. It's not that bad, it's phonetic. And I'm running because, for the same reason, you're in this room. I love this town and I care about its future. And I want to shape it for two important people for me right now. They're my kids back there. They're four and six, they go to Love Elementary School just down the block. And their future depends on the direction this town goes and the village that raises them. So, you know, my wife and I, Meg, we showed up here on July 4th, 2011, for the Fourth of July Parade, and it was amazing. Half of you were in the parade and half of you were watching it, and we fell in love. We knew this was the community that we wanted to raise our family in. And so we quickly made that happen. Now, this community is an amazing one, but we face challenges. Housing is incredibly expensive. And my daughters have already lost friends because their families couldn't afford to stay here. And that's a big reason why I'm running. We face safety issues that, you know, which brought, you know, we come to a place like this because it's safe, and now we want to fix some of those issues. Our downtowns could get even more vibrant. I would love to see our, the Point and Harbor Bay have even more jobs across the economic spectrum. And we face critical issues with climate change. My background is an interesting one, for at least I think so. I started off as a computer scientist, but my first job was a journalist at the Boston Globe. That's where I learned how to ask tough questions, but also see things from multiple points of views. I then started a company making education apps for kids. I learned how to build teams in that. Google bought my company, and I led some AI initiatives there. And now I serve in the federal government, bringing new technologies to make your services better. I've also invested deeply in this town. One of my favorite things that I've done is, me and my daughters have walked every street of Alameda, and we blogged about it and wrote about it and put it in the post as well. I've served on the library board as president, my school site committee, as well as the Measure E campaign. And I hope you can see over the next hour or so, my commitment to this town, but also a new vision for what this place could be, and energy. I really, really appreciate your time, and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you very much.
Next opening statement will come from Greg. Thank you.
I'm Greg Bowler and I'm running for city council as a 23-year prosecutor, a two-term public health commissioner for Alameda County, and someone who cares deeply about this town who's grown up here. Public safety, city design, housing issues, economic and workforce development, public health, those are some of my concerns going forward for this city. Public safety, as a person who works regionally in county government and has the experience of working for special victims in consumer protection, and my current assignment prosecuting human trafficking cases, the only candidate in this race who has full-time public safety experience of over 20 years. And very concerned about the ability of our community to address crime prevention in more aggressive, more proactive ways. We live in a safe town. Alameda is a safe community relatively, but public safety is top of mind for everyone in the Bay Area these days. And it's the biggest part of the city's budget. I am proud to have the endorsement of the fire and the police union. These departments are in need of additional attention as we go forward for the future of the city. Housing and city design, as someone who was appointed by Mayor Ralph Albizotto to the city's homeownership committee, which was looking at affordability issues, you know, more than 20 years ago. Someone who's been interested in these issues for a long time, and there's so much exciting happening in Alameda going forward. Public health, I mentioned, as someone who was appointed by, through another nominations, of Wilma Chan and Lina Tam from the County Board of Supervisors, to address in a multi-additional disciplinary approach way, some really important issues surrounding our community in medical and public health. I wanted to get involved when the pandemic started because I knew, having parents who were older, having people close to home in Alameda that were going to be impacted, how important it would be. Economic and workforce development issues, because my family's actually been in this community for five generations. So as I've been knocking on doors, including last night, some of the voters I was talking to, I was telling them about some things where, growing up in a working-class family background where I had grandparents who were pumping gas on Webster and the one business there, in Elm Park Street, an artist who had a business on Enzo Now, who taught here at the Mastic Senior Center until just two years ago, my mother, who for 13 years has been teaching ceramics at this very venue. Having this community at heart, being really concerned about these issues, I feel like I could add value and basically add to the discussion moving forward to make the city even better. Thank you.
Next we will hear from our incumbent Trish.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Trish Herrera Spencer. Many of you know me, many of you have served with me volunteering in our community. My background is, first, I moved here 25 years ago. I grew up in Los Angeles. I'm actually, was raised in a home that was bilingual. My dad spoke Spanish, English as a second language. And I'm one of those kids that many of you worked really hard to lift up. I had to work my way through college, I worked my way through paralegal school, and then I became an attorney and I worked my way through law school. I passed the bar the first time, and I'm going to say why. It is because of, I had so many mentors as a child that really made a difference. It actually was, I was a Kiwanet. Back then, we had Ki Club and Kiwanets separately, right? I would be offered to go to lunches with Rotary, they would take us to senior citizen homes, and we'd play bingo and whatnot with the residents. And all of that made such a huge difference because in my household, my dad was working four or five jobs a day, right? I didn't see him very much. I'm one of five kids. We were on public assistance for a short time, and this work hard and then give back actually was a big deal, a big issue in my childhood. And then as I became an adult, right, I have given back. I served, I actually worked as a business litigator initially. Now, I'm still an active attorney, but I do pro bono work. And I've done so much work for our schools, volunteering with you all, but I also substituted. I did noon soup, I did whatever our schools needed to help kids rise, right? I believe in this concept of rising all boats, right? And that really does make a difference. I'm endorsed by the Kevins, Kevin Kennedy and Kevin Kearney, our Vice Mayor, Tony DeSog, Tony Carrica. There's so many of you that have endorsed me because you've seen me working with you hand in hand, that my first priority is public safety. We've all seen the difference, right? And I have actually used that with my experience, I'm the only elected official that's running now, with my experience on the school board, two terms on the school board. I was familiar with Alameda Family Services when we wanted to do a nonviolent intervention. I suggested CARE cooperating with our fire department and having Alameda Family Services our backup. And that's actually an award-winning combination, but it is because of my experience of working with all these agencies that I was able to come up with that. I'm looking forward to hearing from the other candidates, hearing more from you all. My website's trishforyou.com. I was given my number, 510-761-5123.
Thank you. And next, next we will hear from Michelle.
Hi, I'm Michelle Pryor. I am running for city council here in Alameda. I am a special education teacher. I teach in Fremont. I've been teaching special education for 15 years. As many of you can imagine, resources get tight, being an elementary school teacher. So that's when I began union work. I would work very hard with my colleagues, we'd fight for supplies for the students and raises. And then I would come home to Alameda and my rent would go up. And that would just eat away all the hard work that I just did with my union. So that's when I got involved in local politics. I wanted to advocate for rent control. At the time, too, the wellness center was being proposed, and I absolutely supported that. And so right now, my current, you know, activism is with Fully Funding IDA. That's a national commitment, the federal government made, to fund special education in our schools. If we ever get that money, that will positively impact every public school, including the public schools here in Alameda. And with that, that is one of the biggest reasons why I am running for city council. I work at a high school, and when I see these students graduate, they don't have the opportunities, they don't have the ease of life that we all had when we graduated. A lot of these kids go into college, they have to move back home because of, because they can't find an affordable place to live. And these are young adults with good jobs. And now they also have to contend with climate change. And I want to change the trajectory of this. I want to, I was raised to leave a place better than when you found it. I think that is a lofty goal, but that is my commitment and that is why I am running for city council. I think Alameda is a great place to start this endeavor because we already have set things in motion, and I would love to be a part, you know, of that. I want to be a part, a piece of this puzzle. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and our closing opening statement is from Steve.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Slosson, I'm running for city council. I was born and raised in Alameda. I graduated from Alameda High. Our kids graduated from Alameda High, and our granddaughter is attending Alameda High. I have a dedication to preserving Alameda's single-family neighborhoods. I am for all in form of the sensible development for new housing, affordable housing like we have at the end of the old yard, the old shipyard. And I support that. I support the police department's efforts to keep the riffraff out of Alameda. My van has been broken into eight times over the years, and I caught four of the criminals with the help of the cops. Our neighborhood has caught four criminals also in burglaries. I have a vested interest in maintaining the high quality of life in Alameda. I have lived here, I know what goes on, I have worked with City Hall. I'm a licensed electrical engineer, a licensed electric contractor. I've been dealing with City Hall for some time, and I've been dealing with Alameda Municipal Power for some time. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to move on to our questions. And again, candidates, if you would like to stand for your responses, that would be great, but I would suggest staying at the table so we can save as much time as possible and get as many questions in front of you as we can. All right, so our first question, and Steve will be the first to respond. This question, one, top priorities and infrastructure. In July, council voted against placing a $150 million infrastructure bond measure on the ballot. What are your top priorities if elected or re-elected to the city council? And how would you address the city's over $800 million in deferred infrastructure needs? And so first to Steve.
I do not support the infrastructure bond that was put forth. This is an unnecessary bond issue right now. We have a lot of items that need to be done in the city that can be done through a budget process and not through a bond process. Bonds are very expensive. They cost twice as much as you think they cost as they tell you. And we are basically taxed right now up to our limits, and I don't feel like I need to pay any more taxes. We've got bonds that are not paid off right now, and this infrastructure, whatever that is, and nobody knows what they're talking about, we don't need to do it.
Thank you. Tushan.
Thank you. I support that plan of trying to bring an infrastructure bond in front of voters and having you decide. We have some critical issues, like I've mentioned. We have climate change that is affecting already near the Posey Tube and at Bay Farm. These are things that we need to invest now because it is going, I really appreciate what you said, it's going to cost more actually if we don't take care of it now. That's my concern. And we have to be concerned about, you know, my kids' generation, for example. They're going to feel the brunt of this dramatically if we don't take it on. We're an island nation, I mean, island city, and we need to take these problems on. Now, on that front though, like, I think you should know what you're voting for when that comes up. And we should make it very clear what those projects would be, but I'm also empathetic to where the city manager was pushing, is like, we need flexibility because, you know, grants from other forms of government, the state and federal, may come up and we can take advantage of it and multiply our dollars. So I think we should be very clear, but also give us some room to take advantage of things and invest, because we all know, we all know that it costs more to take on problems later. Thank you.
Okay, Greg, and if at any time you'd like the question repeated, please just let me know and I'm happy to do that.
I think it's important for Alamitos to support the candidates up here who are in favor of an infrastructure bond. This almost passed the city council recently, and it's unfortunate it didn't. At the state level, we see some bonds that are on the ballot with the propositions, and Alameda really can't afford to wait year after year to get started on some really much-needed improvements. There are city plans that address these improvements already. And when it comes to resiliency, sustainability, infrastructure, transportation issues that are so important for our island community, it's really important to think about getting proactive, about using different types of funding opportunities, including bonds, and also try to get rent grants with federal government. And as someone who works in county government, I would like to be able to be a voice for good communications with our partners and try to find ways to make this happen. You know, Alameda didn't start as an island, it was a peninsula. Alameda was home to the United States Navy. Alameda was home to Neptune Beach. It was home to and still is some amazing Victorian homes. And in parts of Harbor Bay, there's homes that sit where no land ever existed before. We can do big things in this community. We've done them before. We all want to live on an island that we feel is sustainable for the future, and it's really important to think about these issues in terms of future generations. And we have to not only do our part, which the city has been doing, and it has been doing some great planning, but try to accelerate and move things along more quickly and get innovative along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish?
I want to thank the League for asking this question. I am one of the two council members that voted against the current, the infrastructure that came to us recently, so I appreciate the opportunity to explain my vote. What came to us in the questions shared this, a $150 million bond when staff has told us we have over 800 million deferred maintenance. Well, where's that 150 million going to go? They didn't tell us, right? I'll tell you where the money was going to go. It's going to go where three people sitting on council in the future decides where they want it to go. All of you have priorities. You could look at that long list, the laundry list, and say, oh, I want this, this, and this, and think, oh, I vote for this and I'm going to get at least two of those, maybe. Wrong, you could maybe get none of them. So my position is, it is critical, and I've done this work on the school board, where we were very clear, the first priority, second priority, third priority, fourth priority. We make sure the first one gets done first, right? And so you have an idea of where, what you want, where it is on that list. Another issue is, and which, what I, we get to choose at the council level, the 75-word question, right? I think it's very important that it share that there are no exemptions on bonds, because in our community, parcel taxes have them. Some people think, oh, I'm going to get that on the bond. No, you're not. And I think it's important for us to make it very transparent. That is one of my priorities, and that's what I do, I try to make it transparent. Another issue is that, how long is it going to be? 30 years, 25 years, seven years? What is it? And you have a right to know that. So I like to have the language be very explicit so we all know what we're voting for. There are some things that could have exhausted that entire thing. For instance, the bike bridge, the most recent was $200 million for that estimate. So we could have floated this and gotten the bike bridge.
Thank you, Trish. All right, and Michelle.
Hi, I would say yes, I am in support of, or would have been in support of, the infrastructure bond. Quite frankly, our city isn't built for the climate change that is occurring.
Quite frankly, our city isn't built for the climate change that is occurring. So we do need to invest. We're going to have six inches of sea level rise. That is one example. I also think we need to, you know, continue to invest in making our, you know, our traffic diets, you know, for the streets to reduce vehicle accidents and, you know, achieve our vision zero of no pedestrian or, you know, bicycle accidents. And then also we have a lot of new businesses and housing on the point and we don't, it would be great if we could reopen and update the fire station there. So I think there are a lot of things that could be done. I think someone said this earlier. It is going to be more expensive later if we don't start looking into these issues today. And that's where I stand.
Thank you. Okay, and just to shake things up, now this next question, Michelle, we're going to start with you. So question two is related to housing development. What is your stance on housing development in Alameda? Alameda's 2040 general plan commits the city to 10,000 new homes by 2040 to help address the regional housing crisis. How will you tackle related issues of congestion and emergency access?
Hi, all right. I think that's a great question. I think this ties into building the city for resiliency to climate change. I know that we have, the city has already rezoned a lot of the shopping centers, you know, for multi-use like in Harbor Bay or Bay Farm, sorry, on Shoreline and in the villages. Those are places that have existing infrastructure. There are places, you know, so you don't have to invest money there. You can build up. That's energy efficient. And these places also have access to transportation. The truth is, we are going to have to build for density if we are going to create a community for the next generation. And, and it might be a little uncomfortable, but I think it's what is responsible. We need to do, we really do need to do, right? For these, for these kids that are coming up. And that is where I stand.
Thank you. All right, Steve? Would you like to respond to that question as well?
I'd be interested.
Of course. What is your stance on housing development in Alameda? Alameda's 2040 general plan commits the city to 10,000 new homes by 2040 to help address the regional housing crisis. How will you tackle related issues of congestion and emergency access?
I support the development of the affordable housing in Alameda, as I've said before. We're doing a good job on this, as you can see from the development along the Clement Street, what used to be the old boatyard. They're now developing housing at the old Pennzoil Depot. We have the Navy Base. That's a prime land for development of affordable housing. As for the issues of congestion, this is something that is a regional issue. I see no reason for doing anything about it from the city's Alameda viewpoint unless the state or the federal government comes in, wants to build a brand-new bridge or another tube to help us go about our business and get to work.
Thank you. Touche?
Thank you for the question. This is a question that really animates me. My kids have seen too many of their friends leave this island and so it is critical for, for my kids' future that they have lifelong friends and that means that their families can stay here. We need to build to meet the demand that we have in this whole area. We all have to do our part. To me, that means hitting our goals for our housing plans. And I think this challenge is actually an opportunity. Clement Street is actually one of my favorite things because it's only a couple of blocks from where, where I live. That project built a $35 million seawall that none of us are paying in taxes for. That project is building parks that are going to be amazing for us to hang out with our friends and families. And I don't know about you, but I like our breweries. We're going to get another brewery out there. We're getting a lot for it and we're getting all this bike infrastructure. So we get a lot by ensuring that we are welcoming to everyone. Another thing that when we build these projects, like at the Point, it funded Seaplane Lagoon, ferry, half of it. We're also seeing that at the, down there at the Whole Circle with the very fun Woodstock. I hope you've ridden it because it's, it's a hoot. These are the ways that we get our, our community to be even more amazing while making this place more accepting to everyone. So it is critically important for our next generations that we bring and build more housing here. And I think we should, yes, do it responsibly. Let's bring them into our downtown cores or into our vacant spaces because I think we can get community members who want transit-rich kind of places. You know, we're a one-card family. I think there's a new generation that can think that way. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg?
When we start to think about the housing issues, it is about how future generations will be able to remain in this town that we all love. It's so important. And it's about inclusive, inclusivity. It's about every person who is here in this town being able to have a shot at remaining here over time. And, you know, the housing element is a little over 5,000 homes by 2031. It's a little more tailored and specific to our immediate future than the general plan. And the city has done really well of being one of the, one of the original cities in the state of California that has stepped up and had a housing element to make it real clear that there are ways for affordability to happen, to comply with the law and to be inclusive. And what that means is you can have some neighborhoods that are walkable, that have a little bit more density because they're not the single-family home neighborhoods that, that you see that exist right now. But there's some pockets of the island that are already basically slated for some development that meets environmental goals, that meets all those factors in terms of thinking about towards the future. When you talk about congestion and you talk about the ingress and egress issues, we're doing some innovative things in the city too, like with the Woodstock Water Shuttle, trying to figure out with data exactly how many people go on certain commutes and things like that. And our ferries have expanded. And my first job out of law school, I got to take the ferry to San Francisco. It's wonderful. You know, we need to continue to be innovative and find ways to partner with our regional partners. There are things that can be done as you exit the Posey Tube to make the traffic move quicker as you go from Alameda. There's things that can be done that are doable that are not easy tasks, but it requires people are willing to be innovative and to work with our partners in the region.
Thank you. Trish?
Thank you. Okay, so in regards to housing, we all know that the state has given us numbers of what we have to build. So the question nowadays is not, do you want to build it or not? It's actually, we do have to build it, but what kind of housing do we want to build and where are we going to put it, right? And so when, and quite often on housing, if it's on city property, they have to get to four council members to have a project approved. And so when they come to me, I try to work with the developer to get units that I, I'm a long-term renter in this town, there's many of us, and the problem is that we don't have housing to purchase at lower levels. And so I try to negotiate for more housing for what I call the middle to be able to purchase. At the below-market rate housing, that's a formula out at the base, it's 25% of the units. Otherwise, there's a state formula of what, what we get, right? So, but where we do get to negotiate is how to right-size units so that it's more likely for someone in the middle to be able to afford it so then they can become a homeowner and earn equity and, you know, be able to retire and have all of those benefits of housing. The issue, another issue is because we know we're on an island or we're on a peninsula, right? And we do have to be able to plan ahead for that emergency. So I do encourage everyone, I'm CERT, I'm the first council member that was CERT, and that's our citizen emergency response team. I encourage all of you to do that. We have had people over the years say with our old housing, it's like kindling, we have to be prepared. We have to try to get, be prepared in regards to having water access. Most of our first responders do not live on the island, so it's critical that we step up and be prepared. It's important, you know, Paradise, the problem was the emergency responders were not able to get on, right? They couldn't get in. So it's critical that we keep our roads open to do that. There are these other things though, like Woodstock, that little shuttle that was just mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Trish.
That's something I, thank you.
Okay, and you start with question three. So we'll be going right to the, so the third question is on homelessness. The most recent point-in-time survey of homelessness in Alameda County found an overall 3% dip in homelessness, yet Alameda's homeless population increased by 73% from 263 in 2022 to 455 in 2024. What is your approach to addressing this issue?
All right, so thank you for this question. Some, all of us know, right? We have homeless encampments in places we haven't had them in the past. Part of that, I think, is the care team to be able to go out and we quite often get these calls so that they can go out and talk to someone and figure out what services do they need. And that is critical and that does happen and you have that, that opportunity to call and get, provide that assistance. I've actually done that recently. Then they need to, of course, have a place to house people that, that are receptive to that, right? And we have done that. We have different types of shelters available, but we also have things that are pretty unique. A parking lot, because a lot of people want to have their car. They don't want to have to give up their car to go to shelter. And so we do have a parking lot out at the base and I continually check with staff, do we have enough spaces available and services available to help connect people to the services that they need and try to help them out of homelessness? There are things like that we must do. And our police are actually really, really good too at helping and trying to figure out the balance, right? We, we want people to get the services. However, we have to also be aware that there are certain places that are more appropriate for people to be and other places it's not appropriate, right? So our police do have to find that balance. I think there might have been more to that question, sorry.
Well, it's basically, what is your approach to addressing?
So it's a collaboration, working with our service organizations as I, right, which is what CARE is, Alameda Family Services, Dignity Village. We were fortunate to have so many people that do want to volunteer and provide this support, but then we have to connect people to those services. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Hi. Okay. Yeah, Trisha just mentioned Dignity Village. I think it's important to have a physical structure, but also to have wraparound services. Again, I think with having the care team help intervene as opposed to police is a great opportunity to get people the services they need because they don't just assist the person in that moment, they will follow up. And I know that here that we also have an opportunity for people that are homeless to do their laundry, to have shower services. There's lots of organizations in the community that are, you know, working together. So I think collaboration is, is also key. And, oh, and sorry. And then also providing safe spaces for people that are, you know, living in their car, you know, in the meantime for them to live. So, yeah, this is a big issue. It's very important. And I think whatever we can do to provide dignity to these people is, it's, it's a, I always say it's a blessing to be on this side of the question. And so if we can be of service to anyone in need, I would absolutely always take that opportunity.
Thank you. Steve?
I too support the help of the, of the homeless with our city services. I do not support any encampments in the city of Alameda. I don't want them around here. If they don't want to take care of our services, fine and dandy, move out. I don't think we need to go through any great expenditures for these people. We have people that are helping them right now. We have a couple of churches who house them in the wintertime. We have another group that takes care of them for winter clothing. And if they don't want to use that, that's up to them.
Thank you. Touche?
Thank you. I, I think it's our duty as Alamedans to help our fellow citizens. You know, when, when we look at where most of these homeless come from, if I'm remembering my stats correctly during that survey, the 70% of them came from Alameda County. So they are our neighbors and they deserve our support. So what does that support mean? Well, number one, it ties back to housing. When you're homeless, you don't have a home and, and we need to make sure that there are homes for them across the, the, the whole East Bay, including here. And I think we're doing a pretty good job with that. Like, we have amazing leadership here, like with Alameda Point Collaborative, that is setting a tone for how we can actually multiply those kind of effects. That, that's the kind of thing, like, we, we have innovated, we have shown what we, the template for that. And so in my eyes, I do want to fix it way upstream, to make sure that people can have places to stay and that they are affordable and that their renters' rights are protected so that they don't fall into situations where they have to leave their homes. But when, when they do, we need to make sure that we have the supportive services. And that goes all the way to, to the acute, all the way, you know, when, when they need it, which is like, like programs like CARE. That is another great example of our community being innovators, of using a different way of helping people. And, and from what I can tell, I think all of us are seeing, it's helping in dramatic ways. And so that's how I look at this problem. Let's, let's attack it from, from all sides, but number one, let's bring it with compassion because these are our neighbors that we're talking about.
Thank you. Greg?
So the quality of community, of course, is going to be measured in large part by how it treats the most vulnerable people in its population. And I've had that lesson learned for 23 years as a prosecutor, working with domestic violence survivors, sexual assault survivors, juveniles in the juvenile justice system, human trafficking survivors. As a public health commissioner for the county, that's what we're looking at with the data and intersectionality with different problems constantly. As someone who's worked in nonprofits and on boards for Meals on Wheels and Boys and Girls Club in this town, it's remarkable when you walk into a meeting like I did a few weeks ago at the Alameda Point Collaborative and see 10 other leaders of other nonprofits in the room. We are actually, through their efforts, a model in the Bay Area when it comes to addressing some of the problems, the homelessness. But you look at the housing issues and in the last 10 years with the average income of new Alamedans coming into our city really increasing dramatically, you are seeing displacement of people generally in the Bay Area. There are significant mental health issues that are contributing to this that you see, of course, in the pandemic era and beyond. And there's, it has to be a collaborative approach where we get even more proactive about trying to find ways to prevent homelessness, not just, you know, help people who are in need, of course, but also before, and when they're vulnerable, before they actually lose their place to live, find ways to make sure it doesn't happen.
Thank you. And Greg, you might as well stay there because you're up first. So our fourth question is climate action and sea level rise. What are your views on the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, or CARP, and the city's efforts to address sea level rise and climate change, including the Doolittle Solar Facility proposal?
So when it comes to climate change, resiliency, there's, you know, the city has a plan and the question is, is it moving at a fast enough pace, right? And is there ways to improve it as it's executed? I think what it's going to be really important going forward, and we talk about programs like the, the solar project, is to get the industry experts in the area, bring in the, the experts, even though some of the plans have already been made, try to refine them as you implement them. I think that one of the things that we would like to see more, all of us, happen in terms of our city decision-making, we would like to see a higher level of professionalism in our council, what happens at that level. We would like to see a greater level of transparency and we want to see a greater level of common sense brought to the table. And what I'm hoping to do as an attorney and who's really dedicated my career to seeking justice, which is what the mission of the district attorney is, is I'm trying to think in terms of, when we make these big decisions about, you know, important environmental matters and other things, how do we measure what makes the most sense? I literally spend every hour of the day exercising discretion. what makes the most sense? I literally spend every hour of the day exercising discretion, deciding what cases to work on. Is this... It's not just every week, it's not just every month, it's every hour. Is this fair? Is it unfair? Is this ethical? Is it unethical? Is this just, or is it unjust? Isn't that the type of decision-making you'd like to see on your city council? So when you talk about these really complex, difficult issues to address, it's going to be very important to get innovative, to get bold, and to have those conversations and bring in the best professionals to assist you along the way. And the community, the community's voice on how to best address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish?
Can you repeat the question?
Of course. What are your views on the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, CARP, and the city's efforts to address sea level rise and climate change, including the Doolittle Solar Facility proposal?
All right. I think I voted against the CARP. I don't know if you've ever looked at the CARP, because it has so many things in it. I really think it's important that we break it down so that it's manageable. And for instance, while I was mayor, we did the straws-on-request-only, right? So that's a little part of it that's part of the big issue. And that actually happened because we had students writing all of us, and so that was the response we took. We also banned gas-powered leaf blowers and encouraged the electric ones, right? That's another part of this whole issue. The Doolittle Solar Facility, I think that's already come to council, and I think I already voted for it. And I actually recently went to an AMP meeting where we're looking at... Or they're looking at more places to put solar. For instance, the swimming pool, that was never... I think that honestly was never an issue. I think everyone in our community supported it will be electric, right? And then how do we do the solar? How do we do more solar on existing roofs with our school district? And so there's things like that that we are working on. But I really like this concept of breaking it down. For instance, another example was the Ocean Cleanup Project. That happened while I was mayor. It almost didn't happen, because they had been communicating with staff, having a real hard time connecting. At some point, Liz Taylor from Doer, some of you may know her, called me and said they're here from the Netherlands. They haven't been able to do any, you know, communicate with staff, but they really want to do this big project. And some of you may have gone out. It's a fascinating project. It's to clean up the plastic, the waste in the ocean. But we helped facilitate that, and it was because of my ability to step up and honestly drop everything and connect their organization with our city staff. And so it happened. That is another... It's all of this together, I think, is actually how we're going to do this. Thanks.
Thank you, Trish. Michelle?
Hi. Yes, I am... I have read the city's plan with regards to resilience to climate change. One of the things I really liked was the Oakland-San Leandro Estuary Plan, because it's multifaceted. It is not just, we need to build seawalls, you know, we need to do oyster beds, something that's, you know, in line with nature. We need to build porous structures, like a deep, you know, deep paved park. This is... I like it because it's scientists, engineers, and then stakeholders, you know, talking about this. This is a long-term plan. I was just at the Hornet for a climate conversation. It was two hours. It was amazing. We have all these leaders right here in Alameda. We were talking about these specific things. It's... One of the things, too, that I just learned is our need for electricity, the demand for that is actually rising. It has to do with AI, it has to do with, you know, all these wonderful things, like our electric cars. So we do need to invest in energy, alternative sources of energy, clean energy. And I think part of that, it's also an opportunity to bring businesses to this island, to do these types of things, to do this research, to create, you know, sustainable living. It is part of this big vision of creating this community for the next generation. And so, yes, I do like this Climate Action Resiliency Plan.
Thank you. Steve?
This climate change issue is a malarkey issue. Earth has been warming up for the last 12,000 years. We have been getting warmer because we are at the end of the last ice age. Earth has been going through these ice ages for a billion years, and they're well documented. And your dear old politicians have ripped us off with this solar stuff and this green energy stuff, and what happens? It didn't cool down a thing. There's nothing you can do to cool down the earth. Earth will cool down all by itself. But what do the politicians do to us? They raise the price of gas, they raise the price of electricity. Fortunately, we don't have PGE electricity here, but your PGE bill, if you lived in Oakland or else, has tripled, because they're putting in solar panels that are not efficient, they don't work at night, and they don't work when it rains. You need power to be generated at all times, and this is fossil fuel power or nuclear power or something of that. So your politicians here really haven't done you any favors. This whole climate issue is bogus. They've told you that carbon dioxide is trapping the heat. Well, where is it trapped? Show us. Show us exactly where all that carbon dioxide is hiding up in the atmosphere and increasing our temperature here. It's bogus. Thank you.
Thank you. Tushan?
Yeah. I want to make it very clear, I don't believe in that at all. I really do believe that climate change is something that is critically affecting us. It is man-made, and that we can take care of it ourselves, too. Now, you know, there are many things that animate me about Alameda. AMP is another one. I love it. You know, we have 100% clean energy, it's more reliable than PGE, PG&E, and it's 48% cheaper than PG&E. You can't ask for a better form of government working for you. And, you know, I think that's an example of how the city can actually take action. Our CARP plan is one of many amazing plans that the city has actually made, from business to transit to climate change, across the board. We have amazing plans. And as someone coming from industry, I'll say this, plans are really 5% of the work. 95% of it is taking action and doing the hard work of moving the ball. That's what kind of voice that I want to be on this. I don't want to relitigate these plans, I want to make... take action on them. To me, that specifically means to the CARP plan is, our goal is to get to 50% lower emissions than where we were in 2000... I think 2000... And so, we are not there. But we have this amazing resource called AMP, and most of our emissions are coming from our vehicles. I would love to see us be a leader on showing how a community can shift to powered electric vehicles, but also be a leader at the point with industries that set a future of how to tackle climate change. I think that's another opportunity that we uniquely have in Alameda. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to go right to question five, and Tushan, we'll be back to you. Question five is Alameda Point and city-owned properties. How should the city manage its properties, including Alameda Point, in terms of leasing versus selling? And how would you ensure it contributes to infrastructure funding and business attractiveness?
Oh, man, I get animated about the point, too. So the point is this amazing opportunity that we have, and it's an opportunity that I hope we take advantage of. We are in the center of one of the most amazing economies humanity has ever seen, and we have so much land that we... where we can be a leader. So I want us to be a leader, and I think that requires leadership on the city council to be an enabler. As someone who started a business, the number-one thing that I wanted from my government is clarity, stability, and transparency. And I think when it comes to businesses and attracting them here, you know, the Economic Forum was recently, the other day, from the Chamber of Commerce, and Adam Ellser from Penumbra said, "One of the critical things that companies seek is a place where they feel welcome, that we're open for business." I think in the past, city council, because we can look at individual leases, it starts setting a tone of, like, all the investment a company does to get to that point of a lease can get thrown out the door, and that's really costly, particularly for startups. I'm a startup co-founder. We only have one shot to make it. And so it is very critical to me that we set... We can set policies, and we should set policies that reflect our values, but let's let our very qualified city staff execute on those policies. And let's not get in the way of progress and making action happen. It is so easy to stop things. It is really hard to build things. And so I just want you to know, I'm on the side of making things happen, and I think we could be a place that everyone looks at, as a place where things happen.
Thank you. Greg?
Could you repeat the question?
Of course. How should the city manage its properties, including Alameda Point, in terms of leasing versus selling? And how would you ensure it contributes to infrastructure funding and business attractiveness?
So these are issues that the city has been grappling with for some years, right? This whole transition from a federal land to new uses and the complexity of that. And there's always been a balance in terms of deciding what types of businesses come in, are they going to have a temporary space, should there be a transfer of land? And I think it's really important that we're strong financial stewards. So as people who are thinking about, you know, what's the best way to structure something, it does come into timing, right? And that's always an important thing from a business perspective. Is this the opportunity right now in this economy further to be more leases, or is it time to start thinking about selling some land? And right now, as everyone knows, land is worth a lot, right? So we have to really balance those things and think about, how are we going to attract the businesses that we really want? You know, I'm really excited about the business opportunities. I was on the USS Hornet this week, where there was a discussion for, you know, the economic forecast that was put on by the Chamber of Commerce. And I actually, in addition to being a prosecutor for 23 years, I've worked in business as well. I was a litigator representing large and small businesses, and I also was a general counsel for a small corporation, a small airline at one time. I would like to be an ambassador to the new businesses that come in, working with the business community to try to figure out who's the best fit, is the timing right, what's the best way to structure it, and to think about how can, when transactions are made through real estate, that we ensure that that... those infrastructure needs the question talks about are addressed, because that's one of the ways, in addition to, you know, other types of funding sources, that we're going to be able to address those really important needs. It's really important to have council members who are thinking about, not just five years from now, but 50, 100 years from now as well.
Thank you. Trish?
Ann, can you repeat the question again?
Of course. How should the city manage its properties, including Alameda Point, in terms of leasing versus selling? And how would you ensure it contributes to infrastructure funding and business attractiveness?
All right. So we had a council meeting on this issue not too long ago. There is this trade, what buildings are we going to sell, what buildings are we going to lease? However, there's another issue out there. Not... We... The city does not own all of the buildings. So as buildings become available for sale, then we can decide, do we want to lease that building, or do we want to keep it, right? So they're not all available for sale. We do, as a city, we have to hire someone then to manage the buildings, right? And that costs money, right? So I personally think that it is good to try to sell the buildings when they become available for sale. And I think it's good, because businesses quite often don't want to come and rent for two years, five years, right? They actually want a long-term plan. They would like to buy the building, be... know when they invest their resources, that it's theirs. But we do have to work on the zoning to make sure that what they do with it after we let it go, right, is something that we want, that it makes sense with our vision. So zoning is critical to make sure that once we sell it, that we've done our best to make sure that it is designed the way we want, right? And the base, we lost 16,000 jobs approximately. So another thing I look at is the type of business, to make sure it's going to offer jobs to people in our community, hopefully, right? But some businesses want to come, they want to take a lot of square footage, but have very few jobs here. So it is important that we... That was part of the deal with the Navy, to help us focus on replenishing those jobs. We need to offer jobs. So I do think it's important to sell the buildings, so that we do get the investors long-term. Businesses then want to do that. I do want to acknowledge that we have the former director of West Alameda Business Association here. What I do is I do work with our chamber and our business districts to welcome our businesses.
Thank you. Michelle?
Hi. Yeah. I think that this is... could be a really great opportunity. Again, if we create for multi-use, we can create for jobs. Somebody smarter than me brought this up. If you have... If we look at the point, and we create for jobs, and we create for where you live, in a walkable city where you can go get that your needs met, you're... You only need one parking spot. And this is what I mean. Where I live now, I have the parking spot for where I live. And then there's the parking spot for where I work, and then the parking spot I need for the same vehicle for when I go shopping. So creating a community that can address all those things, my job, my shopping, where I live, it's just another way to create sustainability in the long term. I think with that is, you know, getting businesses that align with our city's values to get something like this going. I think we just need to be creative and work collaboratively. And I like this question, because it's... I don't think there's one answer. I think there's just lots of opportunity, and I would love to have that on the city council, just to be able to have these discussions and decide, like, do we want to lease? Do we want to sell? Like, what is going to be good long-term? I think I don't have the answer at this moment, but, you know, given projects and information, I think, yeah, like, we can do a lot of wonderful things.
Thank you, Michelle. Steve?
I have a very site-specific request for Alameda Point. I want the Veterans Complex built. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. And I don't care what it takes for the city to emphasize and get that going, but do it. That is a win-win situation for Alameda. Veterans have a priority with me. Now, as for the leasing, or renting, or selling right now, that can be put on the back burner. The city is doing a good job of leasing out the buildings right now. They're doing a good job of maintaining the type of businesses that go in there. They've kicked out a couple of applications as not suitable for the people of Alameda, and we don't need to do anything else.
All right. Thank you. And our next question, Steve, you'll be the first response on this one. It's on traffic. The Webster and Posey Tubes are set to undergo three years of construction starting next spring and will be limited to one lane or closed for up to two years. What do you suggest... Okay, there we go. Okay, everybody breathe now. Okay. What do you suggest Alamedans do to mitigate the effects and avoid increasing driving times off and on the island?
I suggest the city of Alameda put out a notice to go to work at 3:00 in the morning. This is the only way you're going to beat that traffic down. There's nothing you can do to stop the construction. They're going to take that one lane, and they're going to do what they have to do. So we're going to get stuck with some traffic problems, or you're going to work a little bit earlier, or you take an alternate route. Maybe you can go across the Bay Farm Island Bridge and circle around down south, if you work down south and commute down south. Or you can take another option of maybe taking the buses over, if you work in San Francisco. But it's going to be congested for a while, and you're just going to have to go with the flow. We really need another tube, we need another bridge, and we're not going to get that for a long time.
Thank you. Tushan?
Yeah. That sounds painful, and I think we're going to have to live through that. I grew up in Massachusetts. We had the Big Dig. That was a painful process. But on the other side is an amazing new city, and that... So that investment does result in positive things.
So that investment does result in positive things. I think it's also going to allow us to rethink how we get off the island. When I worked in the city, I took the O all the time. It is a fantastic, safe, fast ride, where you see your neighbors and you get to talk to them. Or you take one of these beautiful ferries. The best commute I think anyone can ever have is taking the ferry. And so I hope people, you know, adapt to that, that complexity that we're going to face. And I agree with Steve. I think we're not going to be able to change that dramatically, that pain for a while. But I want to think about the long-term and the opportunity. Transit is an issue for an island like ours. And we have to rethink how we get on and off. I think we're not going to get new bridges or tunnels beyond public kind of transit kind of variance. So one of the big things that I care about is the very long game of getting apart here. I think that's going to open up a lot of opportunities for people to get to work, get to work in different parts of the Bay Area. I had to go down commute in the South Bay, and that will open up a lot of more opportunities. So I'm a big proponent of us thinking that way, too. Lastly, like, transit around town needs to change dramatically. I'm very worried about my kids' safety on our streets, honestly. I want them to be able to walk to school and they live one block away from their school. We have got to slow down. We have got to rethink how we move around town. And to me, that means redesigning our streets as well.
Thank you. Greg?
So when I read that schedule came out about the closures, it was deeply concerning. And you always think about, just think in terms of your life, this is about the life of a city, right? This is a hard moment in your life when something hard happens, something good often comes out of it. So first, we have to stand up for ourselves and say, look, if there's a better, if there's a better way, if there's a way to refine this and make this a little bit easier, that needs to happen. We need to have leaders in our city who will make sure that that happens. Second, we need to accelerate some of the things we're already doing. You know, finish up some of the bike lanes, get more people Alamidans on their bikes, start more of the cultural shift that is happening in this town to make it more walkable, bikable, and using more public transportation. You know, I've, I've taken the ferry to commute, I've taken the bus to commute. And I think the bike and using the Woodstock Ferry now is terrific. We could try to find ways to make sure that there's additional ferries, more schedule in the time period during this period. But the opportunity in disguise might come from the fact that we get to decide as a city going forward, how we're going to deal with one of the biggest problems we have, which is traffic, right? I mean, since August 6th was National Night Out, it was a couple hours after I'm filing my papers for city council and I'm meeting with people in block parties, everyone's talking about traffic. That's one of the things, public safety, these are the things that is top of mind already. But now we have this coming, this, this schedule? You know, when you talk about infrastructure issues and is there a way to make things once the traffic you get into Oakland better? Yes, there are ways. It requires regional cooperation. So it's time for us as a community to really get inventive and bold and to think about our future.
Thank you. Trish?
Ann, could you repeat the question?
Of course. Okay, everyone, deep breath. "The Webster and Posey Tubes are set to undergo three years of construction starting next spring and will be limited to one lane or closed for up to two years. What do you suggest Alamidans do to mitigate the effects and avoid increasing driving times off and on the island?"
Well, this is kind of the preview to what you're going to see Tuesday night. This item is on our agenda. It's 7:00 C, Tuesday night at our council meeting. And all of you can participate. You can participate in person or Zoom, right? So we do want to hear from you. But the topic is, in fact, for our city manager to introduce this issue to the public. She has hired a private consultant to work, to try to figure out there's other ways to have less impact on our community, right? As well as still trying to collaborate with Oakland and make sure the problem, you know, that the project goes through. But how do we minimize the impact on Alamidans? And I would think that some of you may, you know, I may hear from you on Tuesday night because you're going to be sitting here right now thinking, oh, what about this? What about that? Which is why it's good to have this on the agenda. I think, you know, the reason we need to do this is sadly, there have been deaths, there have been, you know, very severe accidents on the Oakland side, right? Because we, our cars go into Oakland, right? And so this has been a big problem of how do you get us on the freeway and out of their Chinatown area as quickly as possible, right? And so the agencies have been working on this, their cities have been working on this. And you will hear me say, I do think it's important that we be a partner with Oakland to expedite the project. But at the same time, if there's a way to have less impact on Alamidans, yes, we can do that. However, this has been many, many years that Oakland has accommodated us. And I honestly think in the three years, and you know, honestly, I think that they might be able to do more work at night, things like that, to expedite the project. But we are good partners and we do appreciate that it's a win-win to get this project done as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle?
I think someone said this. This is going to be brutal, but it is also an opportunity to get out of our cars and onto public transportation, like the buses, like the shuttle. Right now, the Woodstock does not go Mondays and Tuesdays. It would be great if it did. And then if we like it, we can add more. That's how I see this. It's, that's where we're going. We're going to have similar issues if we, once we add 5,000 new homes or 10,000 new homes. So that's how I see this. It's like our little, like, we can do this. It's going to be hard. But I, I think that we can do this in Alameda. And I hope we do. I hope we get on the bus. I hope we take the shuttle. I hope we start biking. And that's what I would like to see. The, what do you call it? I think you had said this, Greg. It's the, the good that came out of this inconvenience, so.
Thank you, Michelle. And you'll be up next for the next question. And this is related to transparency and electoral reform. "What are your views on transparency and accountability, including recent changes to the Open Government Commission? And would you support ranked choice voting in Alameda?"
I am always for transparency, always. I think the more we know, it keeps us honest, it keeps us accountable. I am also in favor of ranked choice voting. So if that were put to council and we can put it on the ballot, I would absolutely do that and leave it up to the voters. Ranked choice voting increases voter participation. It also can encourage people that are like grassroots person, you don't have to be part of this political machine, to, you know, take this leap into public office. So, and then it's also cost-effective. So I, I just, yes, I am a fan of ranked choice voting.
Thank you. Steve? Of course. "What are your views on transparency and accountability, including recent changes to the Open Government Commission? And would you support ranked choice voting in Alameda?"
I fully support accountability. We've seen right now that we're going to be voting on November 5th, a whole bunch of ballot measures that nobody really knows what they're about. They want you to spend a bunch of money, give them a bunch of money, maybe they'll tell you what they're going to do with it later on. This is not what we want. I do not support those bond measures. I do support accountability. I want full disclosure for the city council meetings we have. They have an agenda that goes every council meeting. And you know what item they're going to vote on and what have you, and you can attend that, you can attend it by Zoom, and you can attend it in person. I do not support ranked choice voting. This is a bad idea. I'm strictly a one-man, one-vote person, and I don't want to waste any time on ranked voting. You've seen and witnessed the catastrophe over in the city of Oakland, and this is just one of the problems with ranked choice voting. You pick the man you want and that's it. We've all got too many, too many elections going on right now and we don't need another ranked choice voting or anything else like that.
Thank you. Toushan?
Thank you. As someone running for an elected office, this is a tough, tough role, even just to be, be up here. And so I, I for one would love to see a, an Alameda where there's actually more of us up here with a range of views, where we can find ways that candidates across jobs, across races, across backgrounds can find themselves up here. To me, that means we have to make, becoming a candidate easier and viability of being a candidate easier. So I want to go beyond just ranked choice voting, which I will get into, but a notion of, like, can we move to publicly funded campaigns? I think that would allow us to have candidates that are here because of their ideas and genuinely fight for those. You know, it, it's been an interesting arc seeing how money gets, is involved here. And I'm going to be one of the first to say that, like, one thing that I'm not happy about my campaign is that I'm funding a lot of it myself. That's, that's not something that a lot of people can do, but I'm going to be transparent with you about that. Now, when it comes to ranked choice voting, I think, I think it's a good idea. I think it's a, like, Alamidans are smart. I think we can actually handle that kind of complexity. And I think this is an election that's a good example of, I think there are three people here that actually have a, you know, viewpoints that are pretty close in zone and has made this election, one where I think ranked choice voting would have been very helpful for. So in short, I, I want our elections to be way more open to candidates coming on, and I want our actual voting process to be one where you can really vote for who you care about without fearing what the consequences of that is.
Thank you. Greg?
So transparency, accountability, ranked choice voting, I'm generally in favor of ranked choice voting. Of course, I think it requires the, it's a, it's a question of democracy, right? It needs to have a vote of the citizens and that has a, will take legal effect as to the city charter and all that. When it comes to transparency, it's one of the main themes of my campaign. I want to be very accessible, open, find creative ways to have conversations before they even get to the council chambers, so that you have less of events that we've been seeing in recent council meetings where there's just so much acrimony with particular members of the public and whatnot. There's, there is some of that that is preventable. And I think that's really important to, you know, bring people together. I had a campaign party this week and people were remarking that, Greg, you've got some people here who are basically like, some of the key players in this meeting that normally wouldn't even be in the same room together. And that's the kind of council member I want to be too. I'd want, I want to be someone who can bring people together. Accountability is super important because when you're doing that and you're having those conversations, it does make you accountable. Because now you're having that communication, people see, okay, that council member is actually doing and following up from what that person said previously. The Open Government Commission went through some changes as, as it relates to its hearings, and it's basically been stripped of most of its, of its work. It's, it meets a couple times a year, it doesn't do a whole lot. We have the Sunshine Ordinance in Alameda, which also works in tandem with the Brown Act, of course. So we have some state law and city law that works together. And I think it's important to always look at if there's even better ways to, of course, get to those goals of transparency and openness in decision-making for your government. Because you want to have, you want to feel that not only did the city council make a decision, but they made it well and you understood it.
Thank you. Trish?
Transparency is and always has been one of my priorities. When you watch the council meetings, you will, you will see the agenda, right? You can go down and you can look at the headings and be like, what does this mean? I don't know what this is about, right? And that's a problem. We need to write very clear agendas right from the beginning so that people know what we are voting on. Sometimes if I think that honestly it's not clear, I will do what we call pull the item. So then I, I, we actually have a discussion. This is what we're voting on. And I think that's very important. It's easy to streamline our meetings where we have 20, 30 items on consent, and then it's essentially one vote, and you all get three minutes to talk about all the items at once. That's really, really hard. So I do pull items so then we can actually hear from you on items that I think are important. And it honestly takes away this, I think it's very important that we be extremely transparent with you all. So that's one thing we do that, that I do, and also how much time we give the public to be able to speak on items. Open government, another thing you're seeing currently with the city council is streamlining hearings, whether it is the open government or its planning board. And I think it's very important to have open, public hearings on this issue. You have a, an open government complaint, the only reason they have hearings is because there's someone making a complaint about something that they thought was not transparent. And I think it's important to have a public hearing on that so you all get to participate and we all know what's going on with our local government. In regards to the ranked choice voting, there have been people trying to get petitions. It never rose to that level in this city. I think it is important for it to come from you all, and I personally do not support it this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, yeah. So yes, we do have time for one more, so I'm going to pick which one. And I'm going to just one that we've covered a little bit, but maybe not as specific. And it's important. So, and Trish, we'll be starting with you on this one. It's related to public safety. "How will you address public safety concerns, both generally and as it specifically relates to pedestrian safety and vehicle catalytic converter thefts?"
I was hoping we'd have a public safety question. You might hear some people say, perception versus reality. Oh, there's really not been an increase in crime. Or it's just property crime. No worries. It is a serious problem. And I'm going to give you some data. Okay, in regards to the use of guns being either used, brandished, or threatened in a crime, in 2019, we had 40 of those incidents. 2020, 58. 2021, 74. 2022, 101. 2023, 118. This is a serious problem. The use of guns in our community during the commission of a crime. So my opinion, it's not just perception, it is reality, we have a problem. What I have done since I've been back on council, honestly, is try my hardest to support our chief and his requests. I think his requests are very reasonable. For instance, license plate readers, we had a really hard time getting them past council approved, right? In fact, when I first got back on council, we could only get to three on having the license plate readers at fixed locations. Two council members would not support the other part of his request of having them on cars so that when they're driving around, that's another tool. And subsequently, after another member, after we had a change in members on council, we were able to get, I believe it was actually unanimous at that point, but there was a delay, right, the implementation. So there are things we have to do to support our chief, so then he can actually attract more officers, and then we need more officers on the street. And they do help reduce the speed of cars. We all know it used to be a 25-mile town, not necessarily anymore because we don't have enough officers. It's very hard, so it all connects to be able to attract and retain officers so then we can...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Hi, yes, I'm glad you asked this question. So, right now, we, Alameda Police Department is understaffed. I think we, they can hire up to 88 police officers and there are 76. I would love to have them fully staffed. And part of that is us, as a city, being able to attract and retain great police officers. I think housing and cost of housing, I'm going to guess, is a big reason why, you know, these men and women can't stay. There might be a more affordable place to live. So I, I think that that is something I would like to address. I mean, I think I've talked about it with housing. And other ways I think that we can also keep the city safe is by making sure our other resource, like, that our fire departments are also everywhere they need to be. I said this earlier, we have businesses and people that move to the point, and the response time on that side of the island is, is less than it is in other parts of Alameda, including Bay Farm. parts of Alameda, including Bay Farm. And then also with regards to safety in the city, I would like us to, I like that we're investing in these neighborhood greenways that's going to slow traffic down to make it safe to walk and bike in this neighborhood. So I think, you know, overall, Alameda is trending in the right direction and I absolutely support things that are, can continue to keep us safe, literally and also in our, how we feel, how safe we are.
Thank you. Steve.
Repeat the question.
Of course. How will you address public safety concerns, both generally and as it specifically relates to pedestrian safety and vehicle catalytic converter thefts?
With regards to public safety, it's time to resurrect the vigilantes. Having, having caught burglars myself with the help of the cops, I know what it's like. We have a situation of an understaffed police department, but we have private security at the South Shore Center. There are security guards at Trader Joe's, security guards at Safeway, and also in the general area there. We need more of them. We can use these license reading plates to nail anybody who comes across a bridge at nighttime and doesn't live in the city of Alameda as a prime suspect and go right after As for the other.
Repeat the question.
Sure, of course. So on this, I think you're talking about the secondary. That's how things specifically relate to pedestrian safety and vehicle catalytic converter thefts.
Now, we do have a problem with, with auto safety, namely speeding. I live on Otis Drive and numerous times when the stoplight changes at Park Street and Otis Drive, we have a drag race going down Otis Drive all the way to Broadway. Now, we can do something about that. Sometimes the cops have been there and caught them and give them tickets. We can also add speed bumps. They've got speed bumps in San Leandro, Oakland, Berkeley. These are very effective at slowing down the traffic and make it safer for pedestrians. We have had too many pedestrian injuries here in Alameda, namely like Wilma Chan, who had no business being taken away from earth because somebody just didn't pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Touchan.
Thank you. We choose a community like Alameda because of its safety. That's definitely why, why I, I came here and raised our family here. And so I, I agree, this is not an anecdotal problem. You look at the stats, you look at the Department of Justice stats, property crimes are definitely the driving reason of, of what's happening in, in town. Now, we don't have a fully staffed police department, as people have said before. And that is definitely one of the main things that I want to see get, us get to. Because right now, our police chief is working down a stack rank of priorities. He's focusing on emergencies rather than some higher order kind of things like being able to do speed enforcement and to do, to, to watch out for these kind of things like, like catalytic converter thefts. And while that hasn't happened to me, I cannot imagine what it would feel like if you wake up one day and your car is gone or your car can't work. You know, that, that's, that's a really big issue for, for people. So we have to be empathetic to, to that one. But I think we can do this in fair and just ways. I am concerned about the notion of thinking that people from outsider community aren't welcome here. Now, we, we want them here because that's how our downtown sustain themselves. We have to be welcoming to people coming over to our shores. So let, let's make that clear too. I also think we have this amazing ability in town where we have a city attorney that can actually prosecute. We all voted for that. And that is another example of like where we can innovate as a town and show our values and our goals. And I think they've done that. Like, if you look at what happened with sideshows earlier this year, the police department and the city attorney worked hand in hand to really set a tone, you can't do that here. So I think that's just another advantage for us.
Thank you.
So thinking about public safety and the intersection of the whole community and how it can work together in terms of, we talk about, oh, yes, we don't have a police department that's fully staffed. And once we do, are they going to work well with the, the community, everyone? Is there going to be, are we going to see them more often? Is their response time going to improve? I absolutely am interested in making those things happen. That's why I put such an emphasis on public safety. And I think that, you know, having someone who's been, you know, grown up in Alameda, you never used to speed in this town. Pedestrian's safety is so important. And there's been challenges now in terms of police officers even being able to give people warnings. So it's to the extent we have better conversations and work together as an entire community, we're going to get a better result. We need to think about officers who have five, six, and seven years' experience and how we have incentives for them to stay. Because we just spent several years, spent our money, our city's money, training them so they could be effective on the streets. And then they start leaving because another job pays a little more, another community has a little less commute. That's not an acceptable result. We need to find a way to have the best trained, highest quality professionals in the fire department, the police department, the mental health professionals that work with the paramedics and whatnot in the fire department, all of that. It's really important. The prosecution team, that's important as well. As a prosecutor who works in county level government for 23 years, I'm uniquely qualified, I think, to help the city attorney in its mission to really refine how we prosecute these cases because they can get more attention through that local effort. Alameda is one of only, really a small minority of cities in California that has its own city level prosecutors. So building all these resources together, when it comes to theft, making it even more focused there as well.
Thank you. And thank you. Okay, candidates, you can now take a breath. We're done with our question part of the forum. And yes, thank you all. Before we do move on to the closing statements, I wanted to take the opportunity, well, first of all, thank you for making my job really easy because I didn't have to tackle anybody to the ground. And also, I really want to thank the community members that provided the questions. I'd love to take credit for them. They were not written by me. And for those who worked together in order to compile them and bring together, really, I think, a, a great array of questions for our residents. So now on to the closing statements. We are going to do these in the reverse of the ballot. You will each have two minutes for your closing statements. And so we will begin with Steve.
I have a vested interest in preserving the quality of, high quality of life in Alameda. I have lived here all my life. I have gone through the Alameda school systems. I will continue to preserve the Alameda school system's history of excellence. My wife works for the district. Our son is a school teacher for the district. And I have graduated from all the schools in Alameda. I will continue to support the building and improvement of our school buildings. My company, Triple S Electric, performed electrical instruction on the Peyton School remodel, the Hite School remodel, Washington School remodel, the multipurpose buildings at Edison and Peyton, and also the Underground at Ruby Bridge. I will continue to support the police department's effort to keep the city clean and safe. And that includes in providing more cups if necessary, whether those cups are public or private. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Michelle.
I just want to say thank you so much for giving us this opportunity and to see so many of you here. I just, this is going to sound cheesy, but I do love democracy. I love voting day. I do read the League of Women Voters, like, I, I, anyway. So that's very exciting to be here and to participate in all of this. And let's see, I just love Alameda. I think all of you do too. And I hope you vote for me. And I just want to say, my endorsements are a lot of labor groups, Democratic groups, our amazing mayor, and Rob and Mia Bonta. And I, I'm just very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for being here. I've been looking, I think I see about 100 people here, right? And it's a beautiful day outside and you all chose to be here. So thank you very much. That actually reinforces what I think about this town, that we have a very caring and compassionate community, right? Because honestly, you're here. And this is why I love serving alongside you as a volunteer and also as your elected official. It's truly been an honor to have served in all these capacities in the 25 years that I've been here. I do hope that I get reseated because I do think I make a difference on that council. I think I represent regular people. People reach out to me and they ask me to, for help to connect the dots. They have issues and all, and then, right? And then I do help them try to either understand the issue better, to understand what's going on in the process, or how we can actually bring it back to council, or we bring it to the planning board so that we then have a second look or a first look by a commission as opposed to one person that is a staff member. I do want to share, so my website is trishforyou.com, the number four, the letter U, dot com. I'm happy to take phone calls, some of you prefer that, 510-761-5123. Or you can always email me, votetrish@gmail.com. I have public events. I have, and they're all over the community, right? And so we have one tonight over at, I have to make sure I get it right, Boathouse. We have one next week at Cinema Grill. But I try to have them at public places where anyone can come and meet me personally. I'm happy to meet with small groups. I, I, I want to thank you again and I look forward to continuing to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg. Applause at the end, please.
I want to make a difference in this town because it's made such a difference in my own life, the people here. After growing up and going to Edison, Lincoln, and Alameda High Schools, going off to college at UC Davis Law School at Georgetown, eventually getting a master in public administration at the Harvard Kennedy School, I was here, I was able to afford, back in 1997, a home. I was fortunate. And I want to give back. I got involved in the community. I got involved in boards for some of our nonprofits, some of the work in the city, now in the county, both as a prosecutor and as a county public health commissioner. And I just feel that this is a really exciting time in Alameda's history. And it's also just a really important one, where there's going to be some significant challenges. I'm proud to have the endorsement of labor groups such as the Central Labor Council, the Building and Construction Trades Council, my own union, the fire union, the police union. I'm proud to have the endorsement of the Democratic Party of Alameda County. And I'm proud to have city leaders such as Malia Vella and Tracy Jensen on our city council who endorse this campaign, along with people like the Attorney General Rob Bonta, Assembly Member Mia Bonta, Supervisor Lena Tam, and people who work in the schools like Ryan Lilon from our, from our school trustees for the school district. In fact, isn't it the schools and the neighborhoods that make this place so unique? That sense of community that we all have for it? I mean, I've really enjoyed the discussion with my fellow candidates here tonight. I want to thank the Alameda Post, the Alameda League of Women Voters, an organization that, you know, has for, for decades really made a difference in having these conversations in Alameda. I will ask for your vote and please check out gregbowler.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And Touchan. Applause at the end, please.
Thank you all for coming. It really means so much to all of us to be able to talk about our views for the future and hopefully we've connected with you on what your goals and values are for the future of this town too. I may not be a lifelong Alamidian, but I am definitely parents to two lifelong Alamidians. And I want their future to be amazing for them, for their, their friends, and for you, my neighbors. The community is what really Alameda is. We've got a lot of things going for us, but it's the people that, that really shine. And I think this election at the national level to the local level is about, are we going to have people who take the challenges in front of us and make them opportunities for the future? I, I hope you see myself as someone who is positive, who is pragmatic, and who is for progress, because I think that's what our city needs. Change always happens. How do we bend it to the best version is my view. I'm also, why I just want to mention that I'm backed by people that I'm hoping to work with. I'm backed by Marilyn, our mayor, Tracy Jensen, three of the school board members, the, one of our supervisor and our auditor. So the people who I'm going to work with really want to work with me. I'm also backed by some really great people in our community, like Doug Biggs and Vicki Sedlak from the Education Foundation and from APC from earlier. And Ron and Barbara Mooney, who know how to make businesses in our town. I've been backed by a lot of people from different perspectives. And I, I hope you see that I've gone out to, to get those perspectives. And that's the kind of person that I'll be on the city council. I'd love it if you check out my site, touchanforalameda.com. And I would love to earn your vote. You don't need to spell it. You just have to look for the really long last name and put a little checkbox. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, everyone, now, thank you so much. So we know some of you have not had your particular questions answered and we hope that you will contact the candidates either directly or through their websites for additional information. Again, thank you to the candidates for participating. Thank you for taking time to become an educated voter, who we also had many voters participating and want to thank them for their help. A little push for the Alameda League of Women Voters. We are always, oh, we have our brochures if you would like to have any of those. These events are so important. If you aren't currently a member, please consider going to our website, lvwalameda.org, where you can find out about more events that we put on, how to become a member, or make a donation so we continue to do these kind of forums and other educational events for our community. And with that, please vote by November 5th and we'll hope for, look forward to a wonderful election. And Adam, thank you in the post so much for all you've done.
Can we also please have a big round of applause for Ann and her wonderful work today? Thank you for bringing some professionalism to this whole affair. We appreciate it. So I just want to thank you all for coming today. I want to thank all of the candidates for participating. Thank you to the league. Again, you can find out more information about the league at lvwalameda.org. They also support a website called vot411.org, which is a great place to find voter information. We also maintain a page on the Alameda Post at alamitapost.com/election that has information about all of the candidates, all of the races, how to vote, when to vote, how to make sure your vote is counted, and any other information you might need. So please, if you ever need any more information, reach out to somebody from the league, reach out to somebody from the Alameda Post, we'd be glad to help you. Before I wrap this up, I just wanted to make a special thank you to Joanne Gattardi, who has brought some lovely donuts, which are over on the table over there. So on your way out, please help yourself and have some. And thank you for coming today. Please keep an eye out. We will let you know when the video is posted online. Thank you again to the staff who helped make this happen today, to the Mastic Center for supporting us in having this event, and to all of you for coming. Thank you very much.